I'm calling to order the January 27, 2025, meeting of the Town of Auburn Select Board. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Select Board is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, dial 408-650-3123 with access code 235235861, or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the post agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone in the audience also recording? Seeing none, if you could please rise, if you're able, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have one public comment. Ms. Goodrich, if you would like to come up.
Good evening, Doreen Goodrich. I see we have lots of support here from town officials, department heads, staff and everything, but what we've learned over the years is residents don't come up here and speak, but I will. Congratulations on your last meeting. It must be surreal to think that that's the last time you're going to be sitting in that chair. I remember when I first got involved in Auburn politics, we had what was called an executive secretary named Chris Rass, and you were some type of finance guy. We didn't even have real official names for that yet, you know? And we moved on, and, you know, at Charlie, and then adopted the new charter with the town manager. And I'm so glad that you got to serve as town manager after this long and distinguished career. It's just, you know, a lot happens in town government, but one aspect that you've always brought to it was the human element. You always recognized that it wasn't just an application, it wasn't just a house number, that there was always a person behind there. And you tried to do what you could do to make people comfortable, and you always did that. And the last thing I want to mention, of course, finance. I can remember my very first tax classification hearing, and I met with Ed, and I said, "Treat me like I'm stupid." I want to get everything out of my head that I know. And you taught me tax classification 101. I walked out of there with words rolling off of my tongue that I didn't even know I knew. So, thank you for everything you did for me in the 12 years I was on the board and charter commissions and all of that stuff. And I know because I hear it out in the community. Thank you from the residents of the Town of Auburn.
Madam Chair, if I could just comment. Doreen, that means so much to me. I truly enjoyed not only, I think, walking you through some of those boring 101 lessons, but I learned a lot working under you as well as chairman of the board, and I want to thank you for that because you helped advance the town. In many ways, without your support, we wouldn't be able to do that. We wouldn't be where we are today. So, for everyone, I'm truly moved by your presence here tonight. It means a lot to me. I'm going to miss these meetings. I'm not going to miss the long Monday nights, I'm going to be honest with you. But it's been a pleasure to serve and to work with each and every one of you. I'm the one that's blessed. I wish you all the best, and I will continue to follow Auburn despite the fact that you're going to be led by someone who is very qualified in the interim. But if there's any way I can help out, I'm there and available. So, thank you all.
Thank you. So, we are going to move forward. There are no community organizations, there's no presentation or hearing. We have a few departmental items. There's a Community Compact Grant. Is Mike here, or do we just have his email? Okay. Do board members have any questions?
So, Madam Chair, if I may, Mike did provide to me this morning his intended request to purchase equipment for the Auburn Public Library. And that is going to consist of 29 computer laptops that would be available for the residents of our community and a server for a total cost of $37,140. That number may move north, but that's what he has in mind right now. The application is up to $200,000. But I asked him to provide to me what he, an estimate of cost of what he was intending on doing.
Thank you. Do board members have questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we vote to apply for, accept, and expend funds as requested by the Director of Information and Technology for the Community Compact IT Grant that allows up to $200,000. The grant will be for purchasing computers and a server for the Auburn Library.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The Chair is yes as well. Our second departmental item is a Stanton Foundation Grant. Do board members have any questions?
One, Madam Chair. Do we have any idea what we would, I mean, it's less than $1,200, but do we have any sort of thing that we're programming this money for, or is it something that we need for a specific reason, or is it something we can let go?
So, through the Chair to Mr. Comter, I did have a discussion with Darlene and Amy relative to the eligibility of this amount. I believe they're looking, and they want to have a discussion with the friends of, probably to update or include some new amenities within the park for our pets.
I'd make a motion that we apply for, accept, and expend grant funds from the Stanton Foundation Grant in the amount of $1,196 for the dog park.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The Chair is yes as well. Our last departmental item is a request for financial assistance, and Chief Coleman is coming up.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. The Fire Station Building Committee will be meeting on Monday, a week from today, and one of the things that will be on their agenda is the financial aspects of the fire station project. And we've mentioned publicly a few times, we mentioned it at the Design Charette last Tuesday, that although there is no formalized grant funding available through the Fed, the feds or the state, that we would be seeking earmarks or requesting earmarks from our delegation. So, I'm here tonight asking the board if they would consider sending a letter of support to our U.S. Senators Markey and Warren, asking for any financial consideration that could be made towards the funding of a fire station here in Auburn. I will be writing a separate letter to them as the fire chief, but I think it would go a long way if we had a letter from our Board of Selectmen. And then on top of that, reaching out to our state delegation, writing Senator Moore and Rep. Frost, asking if there could be any consideration with an earmark within the state budget. So, I think this is just one way that, you know, the committee, myself, sort of, you know, the elected and appointed officials as a whole are going to try to target some specific funds that could go as an offset to the project. So, that is the request this evening.
Do board members have any questions?
No question. I just would recommend that we also include Congressman McGovern in that federal letter as well, since the House can do earmarks as well.
Thank you.
Chair, I'd make a motion that the board have a letter drafted for your signature to Representative McGovern, Senators Markey and Warren at the federal level, and at the state level, Representative Frost and Senator Moore, asking for any and all assistance for the town and its proposed fire station project.
Is there a second?
I can't.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The Chair is yes as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have no communication items. We do have some Select Board general items. The first is a transient vendor license application from Breeze Freeze. Is there anybody here? Please, come forward. Hi. Can you just tell us a little bit about your license and what?
Yeah, so I started last August, just with an ice cream truck. I'd done a few things at Mount Watch Uset. I was licensed in Spencer, Westminster, and Webster. So, just trying to branch out.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions?
So, is the, is the, is your, how you operate, you decide on a route? Are you going to events such as, you know, fall festivals, things like that?
Yeah. My truck is a larger truck, so it's more for like events, fairs, those kind of things.
Thank you.
Is there, is there any other questions? Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we grant the license, provided that all applicable conditions of towns' boards and departments, and the comments from the DCG attached, and that hours of operation be assigned at the Board of Health level.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The Chair is yes as well. You have your license. Thank you. We have a couple of requests to change owner names and billing addresses on gas registrations. Do board members have any questions?
So, was this done through an audit? How did we know that all of these need to get changed? Is this an annual?
Do you believe this is an annual request from the town clerk?
Hi. So, we send out the bills yearly, and over this past year, we've realized that these have been changed, and we were never notified ahead of time. So, we're getting ready to send out the 2025 bills, but we can't send those out until we get the approval from you guys.
Through the Chair, is there a process where town clerk is to be notified of any changes, or is this the first step to notify or that we're aware of changes?
So, once, or usually when the property is sold, we should be notified by whoever either had it or has it. But like I said, we didn't find out until just recently. Melinda had requested a list of ownership from the assessor's office, and then, so that's how she found out of the changes. So, once you guys approve it, then we get a letter from Sharon, yeah, from Sharon.
Okay. I just want to make sure the process isn't broken and like where you're getting notified properly of the changes as they come in, as I believe we've seen a few of these changes come before other boards as well, so, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we make the name changes as outlined on the email dated January 10, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The Chair is yes as well. Thank you. We have some gift acceptances and proclamate, or gift accept, we have no proclamations or recognitions, but we do have some gift acceptances.
Chair, I'd make a motion that we accept a gift in the amount of $500, a letter to be prepared for your signature. It is to the Fire Department gift account from Geraldine Brophy.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The Chair is yes as well.
Chair, I'd make a motion that we accept a series of donations in memory of Beth Proudey, and that a letter be prepared for your signature to the Proudey family, thanking them for identifying the animal control shelter as a way to honor her. We have a gift from Margaret and Wayne Proudey in the amount of $300 for the animal kettle, from Arthur Brunel in the amount of $50 for the animal kennel, a donation in the amount of $100 from Jennifer and Stephen Johnson, also to the animal shelter, a gift in the amount of $50 from Stephen and Mary Ellen Brunel, also to the animal shelter, a gift in the amount of $25 from Gail and Ronald Holloway, also to the animal shelter, and finally, a gift from Joel Proudey in the amount of $100 for the animal shelter.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The Chair is yes as well. And now we are moving to town manager items. I will, I thought you had your last town manager's items.
Thank you. I guess this is the beginning of my swan song, but, so, as a result of the board's vote, we created this eye-catching flyer that, I can't take credit for this, I got to give Danielle credit, she's did a fantastic job, but this identifies all vacancies currently in existence. It's in a color format. These are now being posted in all of our public buildings, it's posted on our social media page, and in some cases, it is posted in some local businesses. So, we're trying to generate some, some interest, and so, we'll see if it works. And I know there was a concern about the lack of interest on some recent postings. Let's give this an opportunity to work. This will be updated on a monthly, we'll look at this on a monthly basis and update this, and do repostings as required.
Do board members have any questions?
Just echo the manager's comments. It's a wonderful flyer, and thank you for getting it out quickly. I think that, and let's hope that we get some good responses, because I definitely think you can't miss it, and I mean that in the best possible way. It's really very well done.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, so we're moving on to number 10. We have no table items. We have no member items. Is there anyone signed up for the second public comment?
Madam Chair, I don't know that anybody signed up, but many of the department heads and town employees want to come up and just say a word to Ed.
That's wonderful.
I, so, I can't believe that this day is actually here. It's, you know, it was, it was hard to believe that when you announced that this day would ever come, I think many of us were hoping that it wouldn't, but it's here. On behalf of myself and Glenn Johnson, the deputy chief, we want to thank you for what you have done for us, not only professionally but personally. You have been a major supporter of us personally and professionally, and you've been a major supporter of the Fire Rescue Department since the day I got here in 2006. You know, you and I have spoken over the years, and you've said it publicly, but we've talked about it in private, where, you know, when you create your list of the things that you're most proud of in this community, probably within the top couple is the establishment of bringing emergency medical services under the umbrella of the Fire Department. And I know Ms. Kavanaugh was with you on that committee in 2005. Believe it or not, it's, it'll be 20 years in March that we brought paramedic-level service to the community, and 22 years since we brought emergency medical services under the umbrella of the Fire Department. And you were a big part of that. You were a champion of that. And it makes me proud to hear you talk about how that is one of the accomplishments that you're most proud of in this community, because I may be a little biased, as I actually just said this to somebody today, I may be a little biased, but I think if we were to gather a group of experts and panel from outside the Town of Auburn, they will tell you that our Fire and EMS department is revered by many, and that is largely not only due to you, but previous town manager Jacobson, and this Select Board that's sitting here, and the Finance Committee members, and the tremendous support that we get from Town Meeting. And that doesn't happen in a vacuum. That happens because there has to be trust in the community and trust in what is being said. And for your entire career, you have brought that level of trust to the finances in this community and the way that you act and hold yourself, not only personally but professionally. So, on behalf of the entire Fire Rescue Department, again, myself and the deputy, thank you for everything that you've done for us, thank you for everything that you have done for the Town of Auburn, and we wish you nothing but the best in your future with your family and those grandkids. Thanks, Ed.
Thank you, Steve. Madam Chair, I'm not quite the eloquent speaker that Chief Coleman is, but I'll do my best. Ed and I started more than 30 years ago together, when spreadsheets and cherry sheets and level funding meant absolutely nothing as a young police officer. As my perspective changed and my rank changed over the years, I had the privilege to work not only for Julie but for Ed. I have learned that, I've learned that Ed took his responsibility as being the CFO and eventually the town manager to heart, and he always had the best interests in the community of Auburn and the departments that worked for him and the town to heart. He managed to even make it the driest spreadsheet interesting to the police chief and the fight, and the, and the fire chief. I've learned a lot from you, Ed, over the years, and I know your intrinsic, deep knowledge of finances have put the town in an unbelievable position, better than most towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Steve also mentioned, and I will too, it didn't go unnoticed by myself, my predecessor, Chief Lucas, and all the police officers, your dedication is what was the board here too. And I'll say it until the day I'm gone, your commitment to public safety, you didn't just look at the numbers, you looked at the people behind the numbers. I think Ms. Goodrich said that a little bit earlier, and we've all benefited from it. So, I'm going to miss your sense of humor, I'm going to miss our Seinfeld jokes and references. We told the Assistant Town Manager, at least in her time that she's serving after you leave, that she's got to brush up on her Seinfeld episodes. We can continue with that. I'm going to miss talking about our kids and their accomplishments, and the grandchildren and the grandchildren to come, but thank you for your support. It, it didn't go unnoticed. I hope you stay in touch with me, and I'm going to definitely stay in touch with you. And thank you for all you've given to the Town of Auburn, our police department, and Deputy Chief Mills, she has the same sentiments. Thank you very much, and good luck. Thank you, Chief. Madam Chair, if I may, I'm starting to feel guilty about retiring now after news But we forged, and I got to tell you, the Seinfeld jokes helped us keep our sanity through some very difficult times, and we often play those, we often refer to those. But I'll tell you, friendships were not only built in a professional, professional level, but a personal level as well. And as a result of me retiring, doesn't mean that those relationships have to end. I look forward to, to meeting you in a different capacity. Those friendships will last forever. I do appreciate your hot and warm-felt comments. They mean a lot to me, they mean a lot to my family. So, I look forward to, to continue our relationship despite the fact that I'm not here. We'll have a cold beer, and we'll find a reason to get together. So, thank you very much for all of your comments.
Is there any else, but ask in the audience that would like to make a comment? Is there any board members that would like to make a comment? Oh. Oh.
Ed, I'm the soft one of the bunch, so I'm not sure I'll get through all of it. For me, you have always supported me personally, and everybody in my department. And you alone, with all of your support and cheering and kind words, have made me a better leader. You and Julie were a great team, and I know you and Dory have become a great team as well. We have been through a lot, just our town, highs and lows, and tragedies that were unthinkable, and you always brought us together and forward. Thank you for always thinking outside the box. Thank you for always challenging me, and now this is your time. Take the time with your family and your grandkids, and enjoy. Congratulations.
If I may, I got a comment on that. Thank you, Darlene. That hit me in the heart. You know, I think what people don't realize is you two are the glue that helped keep things together, and without your professional leadership on a departmental level, quite honestly, made my job a lot easier because I entrusted in you to get the job done, and you're very good at what you do, each and every one of you. And many communities can't say that. I think we are very harmonious, we, we get along. When, in a lot of communities, that relationship is somewhat contentious and can lead to some serious morale issues. But we've been blessed. We have some good people, and I truly appreciate you all working together. It's very important that you continue on that path, because that's just going to lead for better things for the Town of Auburn by everyone toting in the same direction. So, please keep that in mind, and once again, I want to thank each and every one of you for the service you also give your community, because it makes town administration's job that much more pleasurable and much more easier. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment? Yeah, absolutely. Please come up.
I'm going to be super quick. Eddie, you've been amazing. Thank you so much for all the years, almost 16 years I've been here, and you believed in me, helped through the golf course and rec programs and camp and the complex with the farmer's market, just everything you've done and all your support and for all of us, thank you. I was really nervous, but to come up and say thank you so much, because you're amazing. Dory, I'm looking forward to our relationship, and thanks for all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Listen, thank you for getting up and saying those kind words. I know it's not easy, and it's much appreciated.
Do board members have any?
Thank you. I just, Ed, I just wanted to say a few words, not much, especially after all the eloquent speakers. I started on the Finance Committee in 2003, and between the Finance Committee and my time on the Select Board, I think there are probably only a handful of times that you weren't at one of those meetings. So, I mean, your dedication is, is shown right there. And we've got to keep in mind that you have, you were careful and prudent in your management and all, in, in the budgets and keeping, and watching everything through the year, and that's why we're in the excellent financial position we are, because you were able to, you were able to make that happen. and that's why we're in the excellent financial position we are, because you were able to, you were able to make that happen. Right? Thank you.
No. So this is very odd, because there has not been a time where Ed Kazonovich hasn't been either down the hall, or a story down or across in the many years that I've served in the various boards. So I'm very happy for you. I think you've certainly earned it. It's been a privilege working with you for the last two years. I want you to have a long, healthy, and happy retirement. I don't want you to worry about anything that's going on here. Because as you said, we have an outstanding team, and we have an outstanding acting town manager coming in. And that is from a volunteer perspective a comfort. Not that we can replace the 30 years of experience plus that you have, as well as your encyclopedic knowledge. You know, that is something that the town will sorely miss, and is, when everybody leaves, we can't replace easily. So for me, I've enjoyed working with you. I hope you have an enjoyable retirement. And again, don't think about Auburn. Just enjoy yourself. Think about how you can enjoy your family and get some long overdue R and R.
I'll go next, I guess. So for me, I guess the, you know, the biggest testament to your success is not what us politicians are going to tell you right now or later on. The biggest testament really is how you treated the people who worked under you and how they feel about you as you leave. And clearly, you know, having them all here tonight shows that your success in Auburn, you know, your career in Auburn has been a great success. And, you know, I was not part of the board that hired you. I did speak during the public comment that night and strongly urged that they, that they hire you as a town manager, because I thought that based on your experience and the fact that your knowledge and you had a level hand, you know, sort of a level, steady hand to guide the town, that it was important that you take that position. And I'll say that, you know, you proved beyond a reasonable doubt that my comments that night and everybody else who showed up to support you, it was the right decision of the board, and I want to thank that board for having, you know, the will to hire you as a town manager. You know, as assistant town manager, as head of finance, and then as town manager, I don't think that the town residents understand exactly how much they owe you. Auburn is a better place because you decided to work here, hands down. You know, the community that I chose to move to is a community, you know, really that benefited basically from your leadership in having you in the multiple roles that you filled. Auburn is in much better condition than most municipalities in Massachusetts today. And I say that as somebody who works for a municipality in a leadership role. And, you know, as a, you know, as a resident, as a taxpayer, as a former town meeting member, and now as a select board member, I want to thank you on behalf of the residents for everything you've done for the town. I will be honest with you. I wish you were not retiring. I wish you were here for life. But I understand that, you know, that you've certainly put in the time. You've earned the retirement. As my colleague said, go, enjoy your family, don't think about the town, but please answer the phone every time one of them calls you. And, you know, and I just want to also thank you for setting us up for success by bringing in Dory as your assistant, who will be the interim town manager and will continue your legacy of leadership. So thank you.
I think it's all been said, really. But I can, I can say, without knowing who Ed was, when I looked at Auburn for my family and a community, there were a lot of things that Ed helped bring to the community and make me want to be here. And I didn't even know who he were. So thank you for making Auburn a great community. Thank you for your leadership. You've had a hand in many things for many, many years. The community's still very desirable. And even when things are tough, I think your level-headedness and your approach made the best decisions for the town going forward, and I appreciate that. And for all those people that didn't know who you were before the town manager, all the years you put in, you know, it really, it came to the forefront, and hopefully more people know all the work that you've put in all these years. And again, most of the people aren't in the room, but you're the reason Auburn is great, as well as the staff that you've had in place. So thank you.
Okay, so I will go. Ed, I would like to thank you for your many years of service to Auburn. You've been a part of guiding our town through many milestones, including a new high school, a new middle school, an ongoing library expansion, and possibly a new fire headquarters. These projects in the town have moved forward with purpose and determination, because you put forth a strategic vision that was to improve the lives of everyone in town. These accomplishments will have lasting impacts on our community for generations. While we will miss your guidance and wisdom, your retirement is well-deserved.
Thank you. I want to thank the board for all of your kind words and comments. You know, there are, there are times when there are matters that come before the board, and they're very supportive of the decisions that, the recommendations that town administration brings forward. For that, I am thankful, because, you know, to do otherwise could create a division and some issues that typically we didn't have to deal with. And I know some of the decisions you make are not easy decisions, but I know you're making those in the best interest of the community, as we are doing here. So, you know, for that, those votes and those decisions are not easy, but you demonstrate and you show that you stand behind town management and believe that we're doing the right thing, not only for our residents, but in support of our departments when they're dealing with some critical issues. So thank you once again, and I look forward to our continued relationship. I will never forget that. But like I said, it doesn't have to end here. I will stay focused on what's going on in Auburn, and I hope to be participating in some other way, not in a management way. But if I can be helpful, I'd be happy to do so. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Just to finish out the meeting, we have no minutes, and I just need a motion to adjourn.
Before we do that, I think we should stand and give Mr. Kazonovich a round of applause. That, Madam Chair, I happily make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is yes as well. We are adjourned.